All right. Welcome to Thursday's special meeting at Clear Lake, December 6th. It is 5:02 PM. Can I please have a roll call, please? That will please.
Councilmember Kramer?
Here.
Councilmember Overton?
Here.
Councilmember Bennett?
Here.
Mayor Sabatini?
Here.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Bay, would you like to lead us in the...
I... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I feel like we're skipping public comments, so let's not skip public comments. If there's anybody from the public that wishes to make a comment, please go ahead and step up to the podium. Looks like none. Moving on to the consent agenda. Anybody wish to pull an item from the consent agenda? Or the item from the consent agenda? All right, anyone from the public wish to pull an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, coming back here for some action.
Might you make the motion to accept the consent items as presented?
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Business item number two, consideration of contract for the OpenGov cloud software and services. Mr. Folsom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, as you all know, we're working to integrate the use of technology more and more into what we're doing here at the city. We've gone to Office 365. We have put NeoGov in use, where we're using that to recruit online. We are moving to replace our accounting software and enterprise resource programs with InCode. We acquired some animal control software, so this has had the next iteration of that. We would like council to consider the OpenGov... Open Gov... Cloud edition. This package of software and services will help us create significant efficiencies regarding the budget and labor negotiations. It will help management to track our progress on meeting the goals of the strategic plan, and it will help to provide more information to the citizens of Clear Lake regarding those items. Staff has successfully negotiated a multi-year agreement which includes a significant discount for bundling all the key modules. The five-year cost is $165, not $160, it was in your staff report, and this is a $5,000 item. The contract also is not inclusive of travel costs, and staff may need more training hours than initially budgeted, so council is requested to authorize the city manager for up to an additional 10% of the cost. At this point, I would like to introduce Mr. Andrew Pirccato of OpenGov for presentation.
You made the trip from Redwood City?
From Redwood City, that's correct.
Thank you for making the trip.
Thanks for having me.
Welcome to Clear Lake.
Yeah, the microphone over here. What's that? Yeah, the microphone.
Ah, it is not.
So hopefully, all the technical difficulties will be minimized, but this is the first time we're using our new TV, so...
Happy to be the guinea pig here. Hopefully, it's all going very smoothly.
It was working well before you died.
Before I get into it, I just want to say, thanks for welcoming me into your city, to this council meeting. As you mentioned, I live down near OpenGov's headquarters in Redwood City. But Clear Lake is a bit of a sentimental place for me. I've been coming here for quite some time. I actually have a tradition with my girlfriend to come up here camping every April. So any excuse to get back up here is a good excuse for me, so really appreciate it.
Bring more of your friends.
Will do. So planning to take just about 10 minutes here or so just to review some of the solutions and how we partner with other cities, and what we're planning to partner with the city of Clear Lake for. Then I'll be sure to leave some time for questions at the end. Feel free to take as much time as you need to ask any questions. So really quickly, just a quick introduction to OpenGov if you're not familiar with us. We're a mission-driven organization that currently partners with about 200 public sector organizations across the US to help them operate more efficiently, and then also to help them communicate and engage more with their citizens. But we also currently work with about 150 or so different governments in the state of California, including quite a few in the area here, so including the city of Ukiah, Medellin County, also St. Helena, as well as some of the other ones that I've listed up here. I'll plan to go actually through a couple of the examples as well. So the OpenGov platform really consists of three main areas. The first is budgeting and planning, second is operational performance, and then third is community engagement. And I've been working pretty closely with Greg and Alan over the last three months. And one of the really exciting things for me was just seeing how many of these different areas line up closely to the strategic plan and some of the goals that Greg and the city have. So, you know, just for example, you know, tracking progress across the strategic plan, educating the public on initiatives in the city, showing progress and telling story on Measure B and other projects currently going on within the city, and then ensuring staff have detailed data to help make informed decisions as you budget out for the future. So I'll run through, what I'm planning to do here is just run through some screenshots, some examples, and then if there are any questions, I can dive in a little bit deeper into it too. So the first area here that I've listed is for strategic plan, tracking, and communication. And so what we offer here to governments is the ability to create detailed project plans, track finances, and performance metrics against your plans, and then communicate progress with the public as well. So I've included just a sample project here for a new park. But you can see, you're able to list all the data for it, you're able to add in mapping, add in any narrative that you want or context, and then actually assign the finances or any performance metrics that you have. This would also be integrated directly in with your accounting system, so with InCode, or also with the existing ACS system, to help you track and keep on top of your progress against the goal.
And one, just to interrupt here, one of the nice things is it does interact with both programs, our existing program and our future program, and we can take the historical data that's in the ACS system and bring it over into this so that we've got all that historical data that we can use.
I was trying to figure out how the timeline would work, since it works with the current system, and that means there's no need for a timeline.
That goes my question out there.
Then lastly, here on the right-hand side, you'll see you have the ability to then, if you'd like, communicate that out with the public, and then gather feedback on, you know, priorities, or, you know, if you're asking for, you know, how are things going, or if they have any complaints. That's what we see a lot of the times. You can put that out for the public as well.
So what you have up on the screen right now would be in a report just the way it shows on the screen, where you have the, both the graphics of the, wherever that was, the park, and then the graphics down. Each of those can show on the same page on a...
That's right. So this would be, this is all on the same page. Well, everything except for the two screens on the right would all be on the same page.
Okay, the two on the right would be...
Yeah, so top right is a Facebook page, and then, well, actually, bottom right would be on the page too. So that'd be at the bottom of the page if you were asking for feedback from the public.
So it's got a way of doing a survey, basically. You do an online survey.
And you can design the page for whatever you're doing, each, any project you have going?
That's correct. And so maybe a little bit more for internal use, you're also able to then create detailed budgets and forecasts and reports on different projects. So up there, you'll see a couple of examples of, you know, mapping, so being able to map out, here's where the projects are, here's the current status, here's the current commitment financially that we've made to the project, and then actually the ability to, if you're trying to plan over a couple of years, create budgets for that. And then for, again, for internal use, then the ability to then track any metrics, whether it be financial or if it be non-financial, to bring that all together into one system of record. So I've included a couple here for, you know, an example, quarterly council meeting dashboard, if you are tracking certain metrics across the city or for a certain project. Being able to centralize all of that and be, you know, kind of a system of record for all of your reports.
That's helpful for your weekly reports right there.
No, absolutely, and it's helpful, you know, just for going forward. Like, for example, you know, one of the things that's being asked for is, you know, what is the status of the grading and how are we progressing? That's a way that we're going to be able to, you know, show metrics as to we've done. Like, we'll have a goal of X millimeter each, say. You know, we haven't gone through and actually set what those metrics are going to be at this point, but that's probably something we'll do during one of our workshops, is kind of identify some metrics. But you say it's a thousand feet a week, or whatever it is, you know, then we'll be able to track that and see, are we meeting our goal, are we behind in our goal, and why?
I'll transition next to a little bit more on the community engagement side. So this was, I was actually just talking to Greg right before, and you mentioned some of the goals that you have for Measure B, and trying to communicate the story and the progress with the public. So actually, a similar one out in Concord for Measure Q. And so they created these types of community engagement pages to help understand, one, kind of feedback from the public, but then also share, you know, here's the progress, you know, here's the revenues that we're gaining, and here's where we're putting it towards.
So how do the community get to this page per se? How do they get to that if it's on our system? How do they interact with it?
Yeah, great question. So a number of different ways. This can all be on the website if you'd like. If you do include it in a newsletter, you can include it in a newsletter. Really anywhere that you'd want to create a link or a page, you can distribute it there.
So there would be a link, say, on our website, and it would take them to just this section in the software?
That's right.
Yeah, and you can set it up so that you have, like, internal reporting as well as the external reporting. Because not everything that we do, you know, will be putting out into...
Right.
Kind of for our own internal use, but then there'll be things that we want the community to be aware of as well.
Okay.
We also notice we have a couple others. We see it being used a lot, especially for police departments, as they're looking to engage the public and communicate with the public, creating their own pages, saying, you know, here's some of the goals that we have, being able to share that out if you'd like. We see it for fire departments as well, or even public works for specific projects.
And for the police, does it have direct access to, like, our RINs data to be able to pull it out, or does it need to be duplicate entry for the...
So yes, it has the ability to integrate directly in. I think currently for this proposal, it'd be one where we could just upload it directly into it, but it's usually just a simple Excel mapping to bring over that data.
And one of the things I'm, you know, anticipating is that we'll be looking at all the strategic plan goals, and then each one will be able to show, you know, have a metric and some progress in our page so that we can show each one the goals and the achievements that we're making for those.
A way you don't miss which ones we've achieved when you do the state of the city.
Yeah, exactly. Well, and for the state of the city, I mean, this is going to be a great tool for that.
So, question, so on the, let's say, the public work side, so we're going to be able to, like, they're going to be able to track all of their, you know, like, let's say, so, let's say a community person is instead of contacting me and contacting you and all that stuff, is there going to be a way that they can actually just go in and say, here's this road that needs to be repaired, or there's a pothole here that needs to be repaired, or they'd be able to go in and do that just directly from the public instead of contacting all of us to do that?
Yeah, a great question, and that is an option that you would have. So you could use that same survey as I was showing you with the screenshot up. We see communities using that as the, you know, the requests for action or something like that, where you can actually go in and say, hey, with this project, we'd like to request, you know, action from the city.
So that's something we'll have to look at though, Councilmember Overton, because we have a specific form that we like to have built out, so I'm not sure that we would necessarily like that.
That's what I was wondering, is there a way that that form can be on that, and then it just be emailed to whoever it needs to be emailed to? So they can fill out this form, instead of coming in and taking up staff time and everything. Is there a way to put this form online that they would be able to fill out, and then it would automatically go to whoever it needs to go to, as far as emailed to whoever it needs to be, you know, whoever's the contact person for that particular, you know?
Probably with the routing, it's probably a little bit beyond the scope of this, but you could, again, centralize, you know, all the requests in one place, but then the routing would have to be done.
Yeah, I mean, there's probably a different way to go about it. One of the things that we're going to be moving toward is having fillable forms online. You know, I don't know when we'll be getting to that, but that's an area that we'll be eventually getting to, because you can do that with PDF forms online, where you just fill them out and then have them sent in. So we're not there yet, but that's...
And just to let you know, when you go on our website, you can go ahead and submit a request for services. The only downside is that you have to register and have a username and password, and I think a lot of people are kind of pushed away from wanting to having to register through that, but there might just be a link that brings it back to our website where, if they really want to do it online, there is a way to request for services for animal control, for police, for other things like that too.
But specifically with regard to the roads, we like to have that because it's from a liability point of view, we need to know so that we can take action on. And just getting a kind of random thing, I'm not sure that's the way we want to go, so we'll be looking at that.
Just a couple more examples here, just community engagement portals. So just several tools will be available on the community engagement side. The other area that we see being kind of a hot topic at the moment is transparency, and so we do allow governments to share what information they'd like to online in regards to their budget and financial information or non-financial information. Again, you would have complete control over what's actually shared out, but once you, once the citizen clicked in, they have the ability to actually do some exploring and to understand the current budget in the city. I'll actually pull up, I have a quick example here. So nearby, Ukiah uses us for this, and so you'll see, again, they just have a link on their website, and when they come in, they have some information about, you know, here's our, you know, our annual project reports, here's our, you know, general, this is actually expenses and revenues, I know it's a little bit hard to see up there, and what they've done historically, and then, you know, what they're, what they've actually proposed for upcoming budget.
So that communication is one way that, you say, community engagement, can they ask the question about some information they find out there?
Yeah, yeah, so that would be with the surveys that we showed, so you'd be able to include the surveys in. And you can set those up in a lot of different ways. You can have them be a simple, you know, one to five, how do you feel about this? Or it could be just a general, do you have any questions? And it'd just be a simple text field that you could fill out. You'll notice they actually have kind of a story and a project page as well. So again, you'll see this is all within the portal. They have some information about their capital improvement plan and some detail there down below. Just kind of a real-life example there of being able to share information about some capital projects going on in the city.
How automated is the creation of those? Because obviously, the pictures that you just pointed out in Ukiah is obvious, because somebody had to get a picture of Costco. It's a local thing. So how much is automated and how much is required from a staff member to be able to create such pages? And what's the technical know-how needed in order to create those pages?
Great question. So in regards to actually creating the page, again, that would be a manual, someone would have to go in, create the page. But then as soon as you have those reports that are integrated in, those would all be being pulled automatically from the accounting system. So it's really almost a, you know, one-time setup, and then it's ongoing, it's always up to date. As far as the technical know-how goes, it's really a simple, almost drag-and-drop templated type of system. However, you know, we understand that, you know, there is always a learning curve with any new technology, and so part of being an OpenGov customer is that we actually have a dedicated customer success rep who would, you know, who would know whoever is responsible for creating these pages by name. We kind of have an open line to ask any questions, or if they have, you know, any specific requests that they want to do, and, you know, maybe they've never done it before. Our team would actually be there to help them walk them through getting that all set up.
Are there templates available for...
Yeah.
That's a good way to get started, at the very least, where you just add in the pictures and the rest is already automated.
Kind of move your own way to that approach.
Yeah, just a bunch of widgets.
The other area we see this being used a lot is that for emergency response and information, so, you know, obviously, never a good thing to have to be going through any type of crisis, but if you are, just the ability to then share information about what's going on. So this is actually the city of Reading, when they had the big car fire last year. They actually did a pretty good presentation, so apparently, and I'm not too privy on the details of all of this, but apparently, when they declared a state of emergency, CAL FIRE took over a lot of their communications. And so they used OpenGov to help broadcast any information out to the public, so about, you know, where you could go for assistance, if you're requesting any type of response from the public, if you're from a fire department or from your government, you know, to have one place to have all that information centralized. Okay, so I'll move next into the budgeting and planning, so this is a bit more on the internal side, so the ability to strategically budget out, not only for one year, but for multiple years at a time. So we work with thousands of governments, and we see, like, 90% of the time, most governments are doing their budgets in Excel and other manual types of processes, which you find to be, one, very time-consuming, it can take months and months, especially when you're creating the budget book, and then, two, it can also be a bit error-prone, you're worried about people messing up different Excel cells and sheets. And so what we provide is a centralized way to create that, the budget, which, one, streamlines the process, but then again, also allows you to be more strategic in the way that you budget for multiple years in advance.
One of the things with that as well is that, you know, you can set up the template, and then, I don't know if it's as simple as just pushing the button, but for the future years, your time for putting together your budget book has gone from this to this.
Yeah, so to expand on that, so...
Even though Alan likes coming in all the weekends and doing this.
Yeah, Alan explained to me that, he said that, you know, he didn't mind coming in, but he would like to be home for dinner sometimes during the season. All right, jokes aside, so the way that's done, and the way that, what Greg had mentioned is, we're able to create for your whole budget book, you're able to create a template, which then would pull in the information from our budget builder solution. And so once that template is created, it pushes that information directly to all the pages that you have set up. So kind of the use case and the example there is, we'll see cities, they have their budget pretty much finalized, and then, you know, a meeting right before it's about to be published. Something changes, and you have to make big adjustments throughout the whole budget book. And so we'll see, you know, maybe one line item changes, but you have to make calculations across 10, 20, 30 different pages. And so what we enable you to do is build those templates out, so all you have to do is change that once on the back end, that would push out, do all the calculations, and have the budget book ready to go. And then the last bit here is on the workforce or personnel cost planning. And so we provide a solution to help budget, plan, and monitor total expenses for personnel. So again, the common use case here is you'll see, you know, if an employee has a wage of $40,000, that's not the total cost to the city, you have other things to consider, including, you know, insurance plans, cost of living adjustments throughout the year.
Retirement.
Retirement. And so you'll see, we have the ability to build all of those into the solution. So as you are requesting new positions, or you're building out different workforce plans for future years, you can have a good understanding of what are the total costs going to be. So you'll see there, we have a lot of ability to be, to, one, show the total cost, but then also be flexible. So if you are planning to grow and hire new staff, you have some flexibility to say, hey, can I move, you know, can I move positions here, be flexible here, there, and get a good understanding of your goals that way?
Well, and the immediate place where that's going to be important is we're going into next year, labor negotiations with the MMA, with the CPOA, and being able to do what-if scenarios and identify, okay, if it's a, say, a 2% or a 3%, or whatever the particular percentage is, how will that ripple through? And what's the cost, and how are we going to be able to afford that or not?
On your labor negotiation along with lines, would that incorporate, whenever you go in that labor negotiations, that we have comparable cities to show what they are compared to our city? Can we bring that in?
That's a great question. So that's the direction that OpenGov is going. So currently, we don't do comparisons with internal budget data from other communities. However, as we're building up a network, that is the direction that we are going to be going, where we will be able to, if cities kind of opt in to share their information on the OpenGov platform, then other cities can come in and view and understand.
Yeah, because the guarantee, the POA and MMA is going to have that in both. So we should have that at our previous headquarters.
Okay, so I have a question. So say we're sitting in our budget meeting, and you have your physical computer up here like this. Are we able to change the figures as we talk to show what the, what, like, instantly, like, while we're in our budget meeting, and we're all sitting down there looking at this? Is he able, like, we want to change something, and is he able to, like, punch it in to see what the effect would be? And then if we don't want it, is it easily reversed out without making it something permanent?
Yeah, great question. So yes, so you'd be able to go in and actually adjust different line items, and then see the end result of that. Then, again, every change is audited directly in the budgeting system. So if you did want to revert it back, you'd be able to do that too.
So you can do what-if situations?
Exactly, so that's where we see it being very valuable, where you can say, okay, if we're going to take on this new project, how are we going to have to allocate funds across the city? And this is a good way to say, you know, without changing my base budget, you know, here's kind of a what-if.
And you can do a what-if, and then take that back to the overall effect on your, on your end of budget?
That's right.
Well, I'm going to assume that's kind of like, until you post it, it's not permanent.
That's right.
You give notice? Are you not going to notice anything?
So at a high level, and again, I know I took more than 10 minutes, I hope you don't mind. But at a high level, that's the introduction to OpenGov and the solutions that will be provided for Clear Lake. Just to highlight, you know, one more thing, you know, we do have a ton of government expertise over at OpenGov, and so part of being an OpenGov customer is being able to draw off of our network and our expertise. So we'll be there to partner with you if you have any specific ideas of how to use the platform, or, you know, if you want to know a little bit more about what other cities are doing, we're happy to leverage that network.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Anyone more questions?
I do have a question, since this is cloud, what is the, because you're talking about potential updates, let's say by having city comparisons for negotiations. Those updates would be rolled out by your company, and then we would see those updates when we go back into the program and continue. In case, I've dealt with enough software to know that some updates don't just work exactly as you plan for everyone that's using it. What kind of backup system do we have? Does it get stored on our computers? Does it get backed up on yours? How do we ensure that we still have integrity of our data and our information as you roll out these updates?
Great, yeah, great question. So start off, so we, this is cloud-based, so we do host all the data. I'll need to get details on exactly how it's backed up, but I do know that we work with several customers who have the same concerns, and so we are able to, you know, if an update goes live, we are able to refer back to the prior update, you know, should anything, anything happen, or should anything not shy with your current setup.
How about security for sensitive data?
Yeah, so we were hosted on Amazon web servers. Again, I need to get you a detailed security answer. I will tell you, again, we have about 2,000 governments using the platform, gone through detailed security reviews, and it's never really been an issue. And again, if that is any concern, we're happy to have our security team on.
Would the public like to ask a question on the podium?
Any guarantees?
What do you mean by guarantees?
Well, let's say it goes bad, do you give any guarantees?
Yeah, so that's included in the contract, is if the system is down for more than in the allocated time, the city would get a refund.
Would you mind bringing the microphone over? Would you mind bringing the microphone over?
Oh, sorry about that. So I was explaining, that is included in the contract. If the system were to go down, and I'll look at the specific percentage of time, but if it was down for a certain amount of time, the city would be in for a refund according to the contract.
And as far as customer service, in case that we come up to some hurdles, not necessarily that the software is not working, but we just don't understand how to get the data that we're looking for, or we're not able to move forward in adding a new public content or something, there's customer service available from typical work hours, and the contract that we're signing gives that to us for the full year, so on and so forth.
Yeah, great question. So included with the OpenGov support contract is a full customer success representative, so nine-to-five, nine-to-five, five days a week support, and we don't charge per additional training or additional assistance in the platform. So that's all included. We don't charge, you know, kind of for like hypercare, or anything like other software companies do. That's all included in the annual situation.
That's with telephone and telephone?
Yeah, telephone, online. We do a lot via just like web calls, so if you're trying to set something up, we're like walking through how to get it set up online over the web. And then if we did need to come up, we're open to do that, too.
One question on the, in the basic cost on the training hour, are you coming up here, we're going down there, or both?
So typically, we do the majority of training, again, over the phone and online. But then, yes, if you did want us to come up, we could also do training.
Forty-four hours and 56 hours, those projections are, those are over the phone or by web?
Generally by web, yes. But again, that would include onsite, too.
Okay, so there was some mention of travel if you came up here, is that in that contract, or is that an additional, that part of the 10% additional?
Yeah, so the 10% is for travel costs. Yeah, so what we typically recommend, again, is to do most of it over the web, but I think we, what we've done for is, we can add a clause or, you know, saying, you know, that we were aimed to minimize any costs that we endured if we actually came up.
Okay, thank you.
It's exciting to have two staff members who are well-versed in technology to start adding these things on to make it so that not only are we being more transparent, but we have a greater access for the majority of our staff to the information we have internally as well. I think this is a great way to make us more efficient than what we're doing.
All the time Alan's going to be saving, he can use to train.
Well, if I could, Mayor.
Thanks.
You know, Andrew did a wonderful job with his presentation, but, you know, the ability to look up some specific question for you, or member of the public, relatively easily, I thought it might be helpful to give you a quick idea of what that would look like. And he's used the city of Ukiah as an example. So here's a report that they've created, and it's a little different than what it would look like for us, because it's based off of a particular jurisdiction's chart of accounts. But, for example, if you had a question about the pension costs for the city of Ukiah over the last couple of years, you click on the, this is an expense report, you have a number of options, you know, you can click over here on this list, the chart, or the full detail is always below the chart down here, but say we're interested in, so we click on personnel costs, it loads up personnel-related expenses. So we have a couple year of actuals here, projected actuals for the current fiscal year, and then the budget. So we can click on curves then, and right there you see both the curves, normal costs, and first unfunded liability costs, projected actuals, 1.4 million, you can see the change over the prior year, and all that was just a couple of clicks. So the ability to translate and communicate information, as you can see, is extremely powerful, and that would save me a lot of time.
You apparently like it, huh?
What's that?
You apparently like it.
Yeah, I, he's all smiles.
Are you saying you've come a long way from Count of Deans?
Yes, and Microsoft Word, Budget Rewards, yes.
Yeah, he mentioned using Excel, poor Alan's been using Word, so.
Any further questions from the public? All right, I'll bring it back for any further questions, deliberation, or action.
Any corrections?
Andrew, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Any corrections?
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to authorize our city manager to enter into a five-year contract for services with OpenGov and authorize up to 10% additional costs for travel expenses and potential additional hour of training.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Kramer, and a second by Councilmember Bennett. Can I please get a roll call?
Did we open it up for any public?
Yes.
What?
Councilmember Kramer?
Aye.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Have a safe trip back home.
Thank you very much.
And if we do need to go down there, I'll volunteer to go down, I can see my son and you can see.
And do bring your friends back with you when you're camping.
I will. Start getting your other plan, make sure that-
Where are you camping?
Uh, we're at Clear Lake State Park, on the other side of the lake.
That's a good place to go. All right, thank you, Matt. Happy good night. All right, moving on to item number three, consideration of a letter of appreciation to Adventist Health, Mr. Folsom.
Well, as you know, on November 10th, Adventist Health had their fundraiser gala to celebrate their 58th anniversary. They raised almost $100,000 that they're wanting to donate to the city for our renovation of Boston Park, and basically for the Kitty Park area. I think it'd be appropriate for us to send them a nice letter of appreciation, and that is attached, and if you're good with the way that it is, we've got slots for everybody to sign that. That concludes my report.
All right. Anyone have any comments or questions?
I do, I mean, I think this is, of course, what I've been wanting to do for 20 years with that playground, so I am so excited when they called me and said, hey, this is what we want to do. I am so excited that we're able to, that they're able to raise that much money to do that, that's going to be wonderful. And then we'll have our, hopefully, our beach back, and we can do some other things over there. So, because it's not just a playground, they're opening up for us to do other things over there. So I am excited, and I so thank them so much. They're such a great organization to work with, we've been blessed to have them in our community. I've never seen a hospital work so well in a community, ever.
And I'm saying this is just kind of the first step. We want to send them a nice letter of appreciation, but then when we get the check, we'll do kind of a, you know, a proclamation or whatever, whatever you guys want to do.
Photo, no.
Annette, please.
Yes, so, as I'm definitely saying, let's sign that letter.
Okay, any other questions? I'm going to open it up for the public, if anyone wished to speak on this item. I got thumbs up, that was silent words, but positive ones. Bringing it back to the council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we do sign this letter of appreciation to Adventist Health.
My second.
Motion by Councilmember Bennett, second by Councilmember Kramer, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carried. Moving on to item number four. Consideration of letter of support for ERS/NIFA relocation, Mr. Folsom.
Okay, well, I was hoping John Jensen would come in here, that's what my leg is about. Okay, I'm ready. All right, well, John is one of the representatives from the Lucerne Area Revitalization Association. They noticed that the National Institute of Food and Agriculture and the Economic Research Service headquarters is looking to relocate. They sent a letter, I believe, to the, to Washington, asking them that they'd consider Lucerne as an area to relocate, because Lake County is a real big center of agriculture, so why not come to Lake County? So they have asked for the city to support their request, and it's in front of you, and just, John's ready to ask any questions.
Yeah, to the castle, or where do you?
I'm sorry?
Where, will, do you have a place?
Yes, we're concerned, well, we're offering the Lucerne Hotel its location, and the way it came about is that we observed it in the National Register, deliberated for a little bit, and prepared a proposal to them, submitted it, and then made the list on the National Register. So it's a real deal, we're being considered among 136 other locations, seven of which are in California.
I like it.
Good to me.
Any further questions?
So, so if they accept this, this will be going into the whole hotel there, is that?
Yes, and surrounding buildings, almost certainly.
It would build the hotel, or just?
It will exhaust the capability of that.
How many personnel are they bringing?
That's up to them, they have, so it's two different, two different divisions, right? NIFA is National Institute of Food and Agriculture, and the Economic Research Service are two, two situations. In all, they are looking for 60,000 square feet, I believe, is the number. That's for both groups, and the building itself is 50 some odd, so, wow.
It probably could make a ward if they wanted to. I think that would be great, if we did get something like this into our county, I mean, that's just one, you know.
Take quite a few people who fill 60,000 feet, so that sounds like it'd be a pretty good-
Yeah, and one of their primary things is they're looking for quality of life in their place, and that's what we can help with.
However, my question is, is, let's say they accept this, one, what would be the timeframe, and two, where is the houses? You know, we have a housing shortage already, if you move something like that up here, how are we going to help them?
Through construction, though.
Yeah, we'd have to do construction, boom, quick. So, yeah, I mean, I think it's a great idea, I'd love to see it come here. Thank you for, for you guys doing it, and-
Yeah, and we're not hanging our hats on this, this is actually Plan C, so, so we're going to do something into that building.
I'd like to see a nice resort in that building, but, you know, hey, we take the way to the end, a resort would be good.
Thank you for your support.
I would just like to comment, whoever offered the letter, coverage about it, we think I'm very proud.
That would be Elizabeth.
Our wonderful writer, right?
Big surprise there.
I think she probably just saw that.
What I'm happy is that having an empty place over there is really the worst-case scenario we can have, and to have the potential. We've also seen that we have a lot of propositions that pass that open up some money, the State of California's opened up some funding as well for a lot of housing. I think that we can easily marry the two and make the things happen, so that they all happen simultaneously. This is a good opportunity, so absolutely, thank you very much for bringing this to us, and what happens next door helps us as well, so, absolutely.
So your next job is, is getting people to go and become contractors, because we don't have enough of them, that's our problem. It's not that they can't build, it's that there's just not enough contractors there. So we need to start advertising, you know, promoting that.
That's actually a problem we'd like to have, right?
Yes. We like that problem, though, we'd like to, if we're going to plan on trying to really promote people to move here, we're going to have to really start getting some contractors on board, so.
If we have the money, I'm sure we'll find them.
Yeah, that's right. Great, great job.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this item?
Yeah, I have a question for John.
Oh, sorry.
I assume that you have contacted all our representatives in Congress, like Mr. Thack, Mike Thompson, and John Gerardi?
Yeah, I was about to mention that, I want to let you know, you're a good company. And you're, you're, I mean, the likes of the city of Lakewood, our treasurer, Mike McGuire, Mike Thompson, John Garavendi, multiple other organizations that are too numerous to list. We've written and visualized letters and submitted for each of those, and each has graciously agreed to send them along with their names on them. So you're one of the large pack of people supporting this proposal.
Both inside and outside the county?
Mm-hmm. State, well, local, state, federal.
Appreciate your input.
Thanks, John.
John, assuming they approve this, he'll be signing it right now, so if you just want to stick around, we'll give it to you.
Sure.
Assuming-
We'll see what happens.
It's a good idea, so.
All right, bringing it back to council for action, I think we're ready.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to authorize the mayor and you to sign the letter of support.
Motion by Councilmember Overton, second by Councilmember Kramer, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you very much, Mr. Jensen.
Hoorah!
And so this concludes our open session, we will now remove ourselves to go to closed session. So thank you, everybody, for being here.